Good evening, and welcome to the Norwood Board of Selectmen's Meeting for the 3rd of March 2020. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and archived by Norwood Community Media. Let us start tonight, as always, with a pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag, followed by a silent moment of prayer or meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and please be seated. If anybody's looking at our agenda for the evening, you'll notice that we're going to have an addition to our agenda. We have a public service announcement from the Board of Health, an update on the coronavirus, so I thought that was important to add, so we added that late this afternoon. So we have Sagal Reese from the Board of Health, along with Stacy Lane, and they're going to come forward and give us an update on the coronavirus, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening to both.
Thanks for having us. Did we want to start with the PSA, or you want us to?
Whatever you're comfortable with.
Sure, why don't we? I think we'll start with the PSA if that's okay with you.
Okay. My little take care of that, I hope.
Keep everyone informed on the latest developments and facts. The risk to Norwood residents is low. There are relatively few cases of COVID-19 in the U.S., and public health authorities are actively monitoring cases and travelers. Things are changing rapidly, and we will work to keep the public informed. For up-to-date information, please see the Massachusetts Department of Health website or the CDC's coronavirus webpage. As part of our emergency planning functions, the Health Department develops and maintains plans to address situations like this. We have met with our public safety and emergency management partners to coordinate our planning efforts. At this point, our main focus is on keeping the public informed on the latest recommendations and guidelines from CDC. The best defense against coronavirus, and really any other viruses, is to wash your hands, cover your cough and sneeze, and stay home when you're sick. Over the years, we've learned a lot about what can happen when a new virus emerges. Certain populations can be stigmatized and isolated simply out of fear. We saw the negative backlash with SARS and the economic devastation to Chinese businesses. Public health officials from federal to local governments are working to keep the virus contained, and there is very low risk to the public. It is important to stay informed, but it is also important to continue with regular life. You should feel comfortable enjoying our great Chinese food restaurants, where you will probably bump into Tony, our general manager, who plans to do the same.
Folks, General Manager Tony Mizuko here, coming to you from Shabuwi, one of the many great Asian restaurants we have here in Norwood. As you've heard from Sagal Reese, our public health director, some of the Asian restaurants in the greater Boston area, indeed throughout the country and the world, suffered a lot of business as a result of the coronavirus. There's no reason not to eat at any of these great restaurants, and we want to encourage you to continue to use, to go to these restaurants, to eat in these restaurants, whether it's takeout or eat-in. We're here for a great lunch at Shabuwi, and we encourage you to visit any of the great Asian restaurants we have. There's Chinarama in the Ward, there's the Golden Abacus on Route 1, and a number of other great Asian restaurants. These are all local businesses that employ local people, pay local taxes, and provide us with delicious food. So we encourage you, get out there and eat at the great Asian restaurants that we have in town. They have a lot to offer, they're completely safe, and the food is delicious, so we hopefully see you there.
Well, that was very interesting and very informative. You know, there's always going to be obstacles in life and issues we have to deal with, and I think what's important here, and I'm hoping you'll agree, is to not panic. The media has a tendency, in my opinion sometimes, to cause more distress than they should be out there, get people excited. So would you like to fill in a little more on that?
Yeah, and that's exactly what's going to be my point, and I want to thank you for having us here tonight, but we wanted to communicate it to you and the public. There's a good saying about know the facts, not fear, and we're trying to put messages out about realistically what's going on and what is the risk, and what you can do to protect yourself, but also that it's important to continue to live your life in a regular manner. The numbers of coronavirus are still very low, and the number of flu, actually, you're more likely to be exposed to flu right now, there's a lot more cases and a lot of more flu virus circulating than Corona. But what's great is if you take the same precautions, washing your hands, covering your cough and sneeze, staying home when you're sick, washing high-touch surfaces, doorknobs and things like that, that can be useful, and just preparing and staying informed is really the best thing you can do.
Common sense.
Common sense, yes. There is a lot of misinformation out there, and there is a lot of people scaring a lot of people with wrong information. So look at valuable websites, government websites that, such as the CDC, the Department of Public Health. We have launched a page on the Health Department website, which residents can go to, and we have links to those state and federal sites with great information about what you can do and what's the latest going on with Corona.
Well, thank you. Anything else to add?
I did ask Stacy to come, because she, in the department, is really heading up the efforts, both in emergency preparedness and response to new infectious diseases such as Corona.
Is there one demographic that should pay more attention than others, say, our Asian community, as opposed to our elementary school students, or somewhere in between?
Yeah, each day we learn more and more about the virus, and it looks like that it is tending to affect older population, 65 and older more. In youth and kids, it's looking to be either mild or no symptoms, so that is more susceptible population when we look at coronavirus, similar to flu. We're worried about our 65 and older population.
Would you agree that it has something to do with immune deficiencies, that you may be low on your immunity scale, so to speak, and more susceptible?
Underlying health conditions. People are much higher risk with underlying medical conditions, because it does, this virus, it goes after the lungs. It replicates, it goes straight to the lungs, and some of the, I know the things we keep talking about, washing your hands over and over again, cover your cough and sneeze, but another one, a big thing, is don't touch your face, because you're, the only way the virus can get in your body is through your face.
You're gonna get the brain cells.
And so your dirty hands, you touch your nose, you rub your eye, that's a very key point there. The virus has to get in your body. It's a droplet, it's spread through droplets. So cough, sneeze, direct cough, sneeze, or touching your hands, touching your face, your dirty hands with your, touching your face.
And as far as going out to Home Depot or some of the location loads or whatever to buy a mask, a mask is really not going to do the job. This is caused by panic, in my opinion. People go out and the shelves are bare, as far as any kind of a hand cleaner, hand cleaner, I agree with that, but it's not a substitute for washing your hands. So if you can't find hand cleaner in your local grocery stores, CVS stores and so on, wash your hands. Soap and water, it's the best solution. As far as a mask, I don't think a mask is something we should lose our mind over if we can't find them.
No. Well, we actually say don't, for the general public, to buy masks, because they're coming, it's shortages, and the people that need them, the medical professionals, can't get them. There's two types of masks, there's a surgical mask, and then an N95, which is actually a respirator, it looks like a dust mask, and, yeah, many people are purchasing those, and so the people that need them can't get them. Surgical mask isn't going to do anything. What you do is if somebody has symptoms, you put a mask on them, so that, again, like Stacy described, a droplet precautions, it'll keep the people around them from being exposed. But if you don't have the virus and you're wearing a surgical mask, it doesn't do anything. And the N95 masks, you have to be trained and you have to be fit-tested for it, and that's really for a medical professional. So no, really, they're not really useful. If you're going to the doctor and you have respiratory symptoms, and as you enter, you usually see them at the entrance to the buildings, you can mask yourself in that scenario when you have symptoms, but it doesn't protect you against others that might be contagious.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anything from you?
No, sir, we just wanted the Health Department to come here and speak to you, or take a chance to talk to the public, answer any questions the board may have, just about our preparations, what we're doing. As I think the board knows and the public knows, we do prepare for a variety of emergencies, public health emergencies and disasters throughout the year. Public safety and public health and the administration routinely attend tabletop exercises, updates from MEMA and FEMA and the State Department of Public Health, so we're doing everything we can do, we're following closely the guidance and the advice of state and federal agencies, and we're here to help, and we're here to answer any questions. I think, as we said, there's always a lot of misinformation, everyone seems to go to one side or another, but we're here, we're here to help, here to answer any questions, and I think if the board does have any questions, this is a great chance in a forum like this to ask the Health Department any of those lingering questions you may have had about the situation we're facing or anything about the virus, and always go to reputable sources such as the Department of Health when you do have questions.
Thank you for that. Mr. Howard, you had something?
Yes, a question, if I could. First, ladies, just want to thank you for coming forward and doing this. A lot of people don't know all the different areas that our Health Department covers for us in the town, and it's just wonderful that we have you on board, you people. But the question I have for you is, I'm sure you're familiar with the research that Moderna did, so the question I have for the people on the street is, how long to fruition do you think, in your estimation, with the knowledge you people have, you know, could it, presuming it worked out okay, to be a vaccine for this, approximately? What would you guess on that?
Unfortunately, I don't think anybody knows the answer to that question. What, as Tony talked about, we do a lot of emergency planning, and the hope is eventually there will be a vaccine, and we'll work with our public safety and emergency management partners to get that big vaccine to the public in the quickest way possible. But I think, I think we all wish there was a vaccine, and we look forward to it coming.
Well, no, they've submitted, you know, they've submitted.
It takes about a year, so you're not, you're looking at next year. Treatment, a lot sooner. It's a lot easier to find an antiviral or some other treatments.
Oh, really?
Yeah, those will come out sooner, hopefully within a few months.
This is the stuff I was looking for, that's good information.
But again, it's a guesstimate, that's the worst.
Yeah, that's all I'm asking for, nothing more. Thank you, ladies.
You're welcome.
There also would have to be a human testing process that they have to go through, and so on, and so on.
Right, has to go through trials, yes.
Mr. Hjaj, you had something?
Yes, sir. Also want to thank you for coming forward with the public service announcement to answer questions. Just as a side note about who's driving the stereo, I agree with Paul. I was at Costco last Friday, and the lines were from the front of the store all the way to the back of the store, and the lady behind me worked at Channel 5, and she says to me, you do realize that this is a media-driven event, that it's just going absolutely crazy, so I totally agree. Can you just explain if there's any coordination between your department and the school nurses, so that everyone is on the same page?
Yeah, actually Stacy spoke to Jill today, making sure the messages are consistent.
Yes, she also got the latest guidance, we get our guidance from the CDC and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health. They put out for each group, so first responders, they have a packet of information, school health has their own guidelines to go through. So I talked to her today, we discussed a couple of questions, a couple of things about quarantine, who's to be quarantined, people traveling, coming home from different countries, and we just went through the protocol for that. But we touch base, she can call me anytime, she's a great, she's a great resource, Jill's great, we're very lucky to have her on the squad. She's on top of things.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Anything else from the board? Seeing nothing? Thank you, ladies.
All right, thank you.
Lot of good information. All right, that was our only appointment for the evening, so we'll get right into new business if we could. Number 1, Courtney Rao Rogers, President, Norwood League of Women Voters, submitting request to use Memorial Hall for a candidate's forum on Monday, March 23, 2020, from 6:15 until 10:00 p.m. The forum will begin at 7:30 and end at 9:30. Have a motion from the board?
Motion to approve, second.
Have a motion to approve, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 2, Pamela N. Goldstein, Associate General Counsel for Verizon, submitting franchise renewal notice requesting commencement of formal renewal proceedings under Section 626 of the Communications Act for the cable television license, which will expire on October 2, 2022. This has been forwarded to the Cable Commission. Normally, by law, I think negotiations start anywhere from 30 to 36 months out, so it's about that time.
Information, Mr. Jim.
So that's information. I have a second on that for information, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 3, request for car washes, Norwood High School's Girl Volleyball, Saturday, October 29, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., followed by Norwood High School Girls Hockey, Saturday, July 25, 2020, from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m.
Motion approved, second.
Have a motion to approve, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. I'll hold on number 4 if I can for a moment. Number 5, Norfolk County Commissioners submitting their annual report of the Norfolk County for the fiscal year 2018. Information?
Second, yeah, information.
Have a motion for information, file as such, and I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 6, Norwood Public Access submitting minutes of a board meeting for December 11, 2019.
Information again?
Information to file, do I have a second on that?
Second on the motion.
On the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to point out, in the minutes, we see mention of a community media partnership between NCM and the Skating Club of Boston. They've agreed on a proposal to do an infrastructure build-out for the sake of broadcasting, for the purpose of broadcast, or cable casting hockey games from Rink 3, or the, I guess they're going to call it the East Rink, so you could be seeing Norwood Nuggets and Norwood High School Hockey Live from the East Rink in time. They, NCM approved a motion to spend about $25,000 for this purpose. I think they're going to have to spend about 15, and the skating club will spend about twice that, so the skating club will carry the lion's share of the cost to do that build-out, but it should be pretty good, so just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Want to vote on it?
So we have a vote, and a second, on Norwood Public Access, to file those minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 7, Tony Mizuko, General Manager, Town of Norwood, submitting request to accept a donation of $500 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, from Dedham Savings Bank of Norwood, to help defray the cost of the Recreation Department's 2020 Winter Carnival. We'll take that one first.
Second.
We have a motion to accept, and a second, under Chapter 44, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Secondly, submitting for approval of the board interminable agreement between the Town of Sharon and the Town of Norwood for the interconnection of our water system. This is something that we've worked on for a long time, we've discussed it over many months, and now it's come down to a contract to sign, basically.
Is this to sign?
Second.
I have a motion to sign that agreement?
I forget the last page, is the sign front to sign, or is it already signed?
Motion to sign?
Second.
I have a motion to sign that agreement, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Number 8, Val Sveni, Norwood Irish Music Club, submitting request for a one-day all-alcoholic beverage license for an event to be held on Saturday, 21st of March, 2020, from 6:00 p.m. until 11:00 p.m. at the Knights of Columbus Hall on Nickel Street.
For approval?
Second.
I have a motion for approval.
On the motion?
On the motion, sir.
How many people are they, you don't have it with us, how many attendees are they estimating?
They do this, they've been doing this on a monthly basis for years, as far as I can remember. I have no idea, but I'm guessing, I've been there once or twice, I'm guessing maybe 200 people at the most?
About 150, I think it was.
150 to 200 people?
Yeah.
And we've never required a detail in the past, just?
A what?
We've never required a detail in the past, just to be consistent?
No, no. So we have a motion?
And a second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. That'll bring us back to number 4, we're going to have a discussion of possible upcoming special town meeting. Mr. Hjaj, do you have something?
I do. Wanted to give everybody an update on the auto storage issue. I know last spring, special town meeting, we had the one-year moratorium in which we were, through the Planning Department, asking for, conducting a study of Route 1 and ongoing efforts there to see what we can do to improve it, or what do we want to do, what that area to look like for that four-mile, couple-mile stretch going five years, 10 years, and 15 years down the road. And in addition, what this board was specifically looking at is the off-site auto storage. So I have been meeting and discussing with Paul Hefield, to ensure that I can get all of you information that you would want to see in, before making a decision, or as part of the decision-making process for if there was going to be a fee, what it could be. So I know I will have, within the next two weeks, there's a couple of ongoing studies going on about what other towns in the state are doing that have off-site storage, what they charge, and I also have a study going on about the assessing value of these sites. As you know, we assess them as vacant land, but we are allowed to charge or assess based on improvements, and it's not just necessarily paving, it could be drainage, which in some cases is very extensive, we're allowed to take that value as well. So we're trying to get a good understanding of that type of information for all of you. Yeah.
What about the income method, can I use that? Somebody's leasing that and paying that space?
Yes.
A lot of the case.
Some of those, maybe we don't know about. We're working off the ones that we do know, and those are all either leased directly by the dealerships or owned by the dealerships. There are some that are being completed between private landowners and the dealerships that we're not made aware of until sometimes it's too late, and you play the cat and the mouse with the building inspector who goes up, makes it, and they move it around to another spot, so, but I have been assured that over the past year, that has basically gone away, that there is no more cat and mouse going on, the lots are what the lots are, we know where they are, and so we'll be able to give you some more information, so just wanted to give everybody an update that I will be back to you within the next week or two weeks with more information, we can probably make a better informed decision about where we want to go.
Thank you for that, sir. Mr. Plasko, we had a discussion, was it last week or the week before, about articles for seniors and veterans?
No, I brought up articles that we voted to insert, and we have a couple others, I think the manager's starting to coordinate. One thing we've got, not necessarily tonight, but the fact that we're discussing it at this point, we in the near future have to start looking at dates, because if we hold it at the same time as we do the annual, we probably want to have a closing of a warrant no later than March 24, I would guess, and if we wanted to move it up a week, like, instead of having it the same night, that would be the 17th, but we've already voted to take the 17th off, so it might be more like the 10th. So we still have a couple weeks to really narrow that down, but we have to stay alert and pick a date, think about a date, we can talk with staff a little bit, and Mr. Mizuko about how prepared we are, but in the next couple weeks, we're going to have to pick a date, set a filing deadline.
Okay, worst-case scenario, we're looking at something around March 24.
Yeah, or the earliest, March 10, if we push it back.
If we can get that done in time.
What is the statutory obligation on that?
Well, it's really like, it really only takes about four weeks, but the planning in the past year or two, couple years, had asked us to even add a couple weeks, because if they're having some of the things filed with them last minute and require a public hearing, we know this discussion of Route 1, I don't know if they're having public hearings or what that process is, so they may, they may need a little more time, that's why I was calculating on the six weeks instead of the four weeks.
Last year, due to the override and some other considerations, we held a special earlier, and that seemed to work, people seemed to like that, except I don't know if we're ready to do an early special.
Right, this year we have things that make us wait.
Yeah, and in that special, if you remember, we had some challenges with the downtown ordinance, I mean, it came down to the wire to get everything in, so I think, given that there's, I think, one major zoning proposal, possibly two, and several minor ones, probably extending it to when we normally have the annual is probably the best idea.
So we start on the second Monday in May, which would be the 11th, so you'd have the 11th, the 14th, the 18th, and the 21st, and then I think you're into Memorial Day weekend. So we've been averaging five dates the last few years.
It's going to be much faster this year.
I've heard that one before.
We say that every year.
Every year we're going to be prepared, every year it's going to go much faster, and every year we won't be rushing at the end.
I mean, if you want to, if you want to prepare for five, for five, then maybe you start with the special on Thursday, the 7th, you know, and then see if you can get that done, or at least finished, if not finished on the 7th, finish it on the 11th and go straight to the annual. Anyway.
Yeah, I'll sleep on it for one or two weeks, but then I have to, I have to get serious.
I think we're going to start looking at a date to lock down the special, and then we'll go from there as far as the annual. But this is why I wanted to have this discussion tonight, just to get everybody aware of what's going on, and try to focus on what we want to have on that document for a special town meeting and where we want to go.
One more, Mr. Chairman. I'm also looking at, and I would love to know everyone else's opinion is, with the agreement with, between the Skating Club of Boston and the Norwood High School, and the potential agreement between the skating club and the Norwood Nuggets, I would like to remove our support for a potential ice rink down in South Norwood. I don't think, in just looking at some of the documents, I don't think we actually have to transfer land back, it's just reversing a vote to support having an ice rink and asking for funding from the state, which I know we got. I would like to back out of that by doing the least amount of work at town meeting, because I don't think we need to go transfer the land. I'm hopeful that the ice rink issue between the Nuggets and the skating club of Boston will be successful, in addition to what may occur if they build the fourth ice rink. I just think with all that we have done as a town with regards to getting the skating club here, you know, great job by a lot of individuals, I don't, in my opinion, don't want to give the impression that we are still looking for another regional ice rink that other towns can take advantage of and come here, especially where we're going to be probably building another, or at least recommended to build a new middle school in that same general area. I don't know why we would just keep hanging our hat out to the door for, misleading John Rogers and Mike Rush that somehow we're still looking for funds to build a public ice skating rink in that area.
Mr. Plasko, you had something?
Well, I think they've proven they haven't been able to get the funds, administration just has no intentions whatsoever of making those funds available, at least in the near future, maybe down the road if there's new administrations, but we're talking, you know, four years or more down the road of any possibility. The only hesitation I have whatsoever is the skating club of Boston, when it came here and started talking about offering ice to the high school and the Nuggets, was never a replacement for the rink. It was until they grew into using all of the time themselves and knowing that the town was a few years off when all these negotiations started, from having its own rink, if it was going to happen at all, which it has not, they could fill the gap, hopefully. They are now already commissioned a study about the feasibility of building a fourth rink, and then we pretty much know they're going to be set, and there's no need for any discussion whatsoever of another rink. I personally have no discussion, because I don't think, because I just said, the state's going to pony up any money, anywhere's near what the original promise was of the town not having to pay a cent for it. But it's not, I just want to make everyone clear, everyone be clear about it, the skating club time offered was only intended to be, at least originally, temporary. They would love to continue, I know, working with the town and town groups if they have the ice time available. If they build that fourth rink, they will make a priority of the local organizations, the high school, Nuggets, and so forth, but they haven't yet settled on the fact that they will build that fourth rink. So that's the only hesitation whatsoever, and clarification that it was never intended to be a replacement, but a temporary solution.
I agree with that. Anything else?
So you're thinking, if you proceeded, would just be an article asking town meeting to, what's the word I want?
Withdrawal.
Withdrawal, it's authorization for the selection of seat funds?
Yes.
I think that would work.
So, you know the dates?
Well, I don't want to pursue it unless, you know, this.
We'll have some more discussions with the.
Okay, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I get the point, I think probably.
I get the point. I think probably, I don't think we need to take any action at all on it, to tell you the truth, or even town meeting. I think as you, the point, actually, I hadn't thought of it, Mr. Heshab, but you're right. We're going to be doing, we hope to be doing a major construction project down at that property anyway. It's inconceivable you'd build a junior high school and a hockey rink at the same time. So it's, and the junior high school is far more important. So it probably is the type of thing that just, that just dies a natural death, if it dies at all. And if the state surprises us one day and we find out we have $10 million and we re-site the rink to some other place in the town, we can consider that. But I think, I just don't think any action is necessary. But I'll go along with my colleagues on it.
You know, if I can. Also, I think this project started out as a $5 million project.
5.6 million, 100% paid by the state.
Right.
The loss, they've been saying, no, no, no. We saw a letter in October that was stated, addressed to the state rep, not us, the previous December. And it took that long, 10 months to even show it to us, where the state was basically saying they'll consider putting $2 million if the town comes up with the rest. The original proposal, the town meeting and everything, was that the state was paying the entire freight.
And when you say $2 million, we come up with the rest, that rest, that the balance was somewhere?
Some combination of?
Was somewhere around $8 million for a total of $10 million.
Could be the town, could be other private donations, whatever. But the state was only going to pony up maybe $2 million.
I guess my point is, this number continues to roll.
And even that one had a caveat, don't do anything yet.
You know, the longer they wait, it's going to be more expensive. So it's almost out of sight now and impossible to get a rink down there, because it's just financially not feasible with everything that's on the horizon between the middle school and other things going on. So anything else? Mr. Manager, would you like to give us an update?
Sure, I have a couple items. If NCM could queue up another PSA that we have.
Here we go.
Tell me about it.
Hi, folks. I'm General Manager Tony Mizuko, coming to you with a special announcement about this year's pajama drive.
And I am Paul Bishop, Chairman of the Norwood Board of Selectmen, also here to speak about this year's pajama drive.
This year, we're collecting pajamas again for the Boston Bruins Pajama Drive. And we're hoping to beat our total of 2,500 pairs last year. And you can donate at any town building or any school building, as well as a number of businesses and community organizations throughout town.
Many of the families around Norwood may not have the same opportunities other young families have. Young families today make sure their children are dressed warmly, especially at night when the temperatures are turned down in our furnaces and so on. And that goes for their grandparents, too. They get concerned about their grandchildren. Everybody wants to see our young children dressed in warm pajamas during these cold winter nights. So it's important that you take part.
So please be generous in donating new, unused pajamas for ages zero all the way up to late teens and early adults. And you can drop them off at any of the school or town buildings in the town of Norwood.
And again, as Tony said, last year, we received 2,500 approximately donations across this town. It surpassed any other time that we've done this. So this year, we're trying to surpass that 2,500 mark and go even higher. So help us do that job and keep our young people warm during these cold winter nights. Thank you.
As the board and the public have seen, is our call to action. There's two weeks left on the pajama drive. Two years ago, we collected about, between 700 and 800 pairs. Last year, we hit 2,500 pairs. This year, so far year-to-date, we're at about 1,500 pairs. We're collecting at every school in town, including St. Catherine's, all the town buildings. Norwood Hospital is joining in with us. There's a number of private organizations out there. It's open to residents, to businesses, folks who work in town. But please bring in your pajamas to any town or school facility. We'd like to beat that number, if we could.
Now, if I could add to that, it's a busy time of year. We have the Circle of Hope Dancing with the Stars. And there are six people involved in that. They're all looking for funding. We have political races around town, people are contributing to. We have, very shortly, we'll have the post-prom party. And they've already sent letters out looking for contributions. It's a very busy time as far as donations concerned. But I don't want the pajama drive to get lost in the shuffle. It's very important to me personally to have young children have warm pajamas. So with everything that's going on, see if you can find time to at least give us one pair of pajamas. You can go to a facility like a Costco's or a BJ's, and they start as low as $5 for a pair of pajamas for a young person. So if you get an opportunity, please do that. And there are drop sites throughout the town. And if you have a problem trying to find one, you can call the Town Hall Switchboard, 781-762-1240. And they will tell you where the sites are around town if you choose to donate. And I thank you all for that.
Mr. Chairman, may I have a moment of personal privilege?
If you must.
Just an event to announce. Sunday, March 15th, from 4 to 8:00 PM at the Old Colonial Cafe, I will be hosting a fundraiser for myself for Norwood Dancing with the Stars. Tickets are $35 each. You can get them in advance, or you can buy them at the door. 100% of the proceeds go to Circle of Hope. There will be appetizers, a cash bar, raffles, and door prizes. There'll also be a big raffle going on. Mr. Chairman, would you care to explain that big raffle?
The big raffle involves 250 tickets to be sold at the cost of $100 each. Of those 250 tickets, there'll be one winner for $5,000. So if you choose to do that, I know it's a lot of money with everything we just spoke about. But if you choose to want to gamble your $100 away and take a chance, they are for sale. Yours truly has tickets if you would need them. If you can't get one through me, God forbid, I should be busy. You can get them through the Town Hall Switchboard again at 781-762-1240. Again, that's 250 tickets to be sold, just 250, no more, at a cost of $100 apiece. And the total prize would be a $5,000 check written out to you.
How many tickets are there?
250. You going to do the odds with me here?
It's a good investment.
I knew about those tickets before I made my contribution.
And again, I realize it's a very difficult time. There's a lot going on. So.
It is.
Do the pajamas first, if you have any money left over.
Buy a raffle ticket. And if you have a little bit more left over, come to the OCC Sunday, March 15th, 4 to 8, $35 a ticket. 100% of those proceeds go to the Circle of Hope, which is a great, great organization. 100% of Circle of Hope's money stays right here in Norwood and goes to helping families in need. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that.
I think that's an important thing to remember. Circle of Hope money is about our town, our people. It's an investment in your own community. So it's wise, if you don't want to do directly to the Circle of Hope, you can find some of the, you may know that's a dancer and contribute to them. Again, that money flows back into the Circle of Hope. So keep that in mind. Is that it?
That is all, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
I have a question.
Question.
These PSAs, do you audition, you guys, do you audition for those?
Well, we're going to a union.
Like you did. Screen Actors Guild.
Screen Actors Guild, absolutely.
Well, Mr. Maloney, Mr. Hajarz, right, you have an acting credit from earlier this year. We did a PSA for the Rotary Club. So kudos to NCM, incidentally, while we're, while we make a joke, that their ability to help us produce content like that and get it live and get it ready in a very short period of time is incredible. Most towns would be paying a fortune. We actually pay nothing when we do small, little video announcements like that. We just call NCM, they come right down, or we go right down, and they're great to work with. It's a great, great resource for a town that very few towns in the Commonwealth have.
With that said, Mr. Maloney, do you have anything tonight?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm shocked. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one. I'd like to advertise, like everybody else here is doing tonight. So the VFW is having their annual St. Patty's Day Party on Saturday, March 14th, from 7:00 to 11:00. They're going to have Irish and dance music by a DJ. They're also going to have corned beef and cabbage dinner and lamb stew. $15 a person, folks. I mean, how can you go wrong, you know?
You can buy three pairs of pajamas.
And here's the thing, yeah, pajamas. And here's the thing, I bought tickets number 63 and 64. So if you want to go, you better get your tickets pretty quick. So, because they're, before you know it, they're going to be running out. So that's Saturday, March 14th, that they're having this party. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko, anything this evening?
Nothing further, sir.
Nothing. Mr. Ja.
I just have one announcement. Again, it's on NCM. NCM's Tom Cummings Show will be hosting, interviewing all four candidates for two seats on the Board of Selectmen tomorrow evening. It's live at 5 o'clock. Residents are allowed to attend the program at the studio, which is located in the high school. So whether you go there or watch it, it's not a debate. I guess Tom's going to have a debate a little bit later on this month. But right now, it's the interview that he's conducting of all four candidates. Should be very, very informative and a good way to find out about the candidates that you may not know or haven't heard yet. So please do.
Can we get asked the questions?
No, Tom's got his own questionnaire. You can submit them for the debate if you want to ask. That's a good idea.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. And I have one thing this evening, if I could. Carrie McCarthy from our senior center has asked me to announce there will be a community forum coming up, Town of Norwood Age Friendly Community Forum. And that will be, guest speaker is Dr. Caitlin Coyle from UMass Boston. She will be making a present, demographic presentation, facilitating an open discussion with relatives on how to make Norwood a more age-friendly community. So what exactly does age-friendly mean? A short time ago, the community center, the Norwood Senior Center, rather, was given the designation of being an age-friendly community, Norwood being an age-friendly community. And what does that actually mean? It means we're focusing on our aging population. Norwood wishes to promote physical independence, dignity, with opportunities for engagement in our community, in our aging population. It takes into, takes in planning, accessibility, features that may be needed around town, various types of activities for our aging community seniors, housing, and by that I mean affordable housing to seniors, transportation needs, and so on, and so on. So there's a lot of good information that'll be given out on March 11th at the Community Room at the Public Safety Building here in Manhattan Street. Again, that's March 11th. It will be from 6:00 PM until 8:00 PM. And it will be an open discussion with residents about how to make this more age-friendly community, focusing on the aging population we have here in Norwood. So please join us on that evening, if you can. And there'll be a lot of good information given out. And hopefully, we'll get some good feedback coming back. So with that said, I am all set for the evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Wow. I can't even finish, and they're already on me. So I have a motion to adjourn and a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. And we'll be back next week at 7:00 PM. Thank you all.